Thank you, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Ms. Zembo, can you call the roll?
Mr. Bennell?
Here.
Mr. Kuzic?
Present.
Mr. Deetz?
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Geisinger?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
And Mr. Warner?
Here.
All present. Mr. Geisinger, by vote.
All present, one electronically. Our next item is the approval of the minutes of the June 1st, 2017, moved by Mr. Werner to approve by acclamation, seconded by Mr. Deetz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, one abstention by Mr. Kraft. Uh, next we have courtesy of the floor. We did not have anyone, uh, sign in. Is there anyone that would like to address council this evening under courtesy of the floor? Uh, there being none, uh, next is the Controller's report. Mr. Barron is not here this evening. Then we will move into the County Executive's report. Mr. Brown, did you have anything? Nothing from the County Executive. Then we will move into old business. Uh, first item is a public hearing on the 2017 budget amendment ordinance. This ordinance was introduced by Mr. Geisinger and Mr. Bennell at the June 1st, uh, meeting, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote are scheduled for this evening. Okay, so at this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing on the 2017 first budget amendment ordinance. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council regarding the budget amendment ordinance? Okay, uh, there being none, uh, any questions or comments from council regarding the 2017 budget amendment? Okay, we covered this, uh, yesterday at the Finance Committee meeting extensively, and it was, um, moved forward with the recommendation for approval. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, there being none. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Geisinger?
Glenn? Yes.
You're voting on the 2017 budget?
Yes, I got it.
Okay. Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item under old business is the public hearing on the ordinance titled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Conveyance of Permanent and Temporary Easements Owned by Northampton County, Located in Lower Nazareth Township to the Eastern Suburban Water Authority, To Enable Them to Provide Public Water Through Its Public Water System." Uh, this ordinance was introduced by Mr. Werner and Mr. Bennell at the June 1st meeting, uh, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote are scheduled for tonight. Uh, at this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing on the ordinance. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on the easement for, uh, Eastern Suburban Water Authority? Okay, there being none, uh, are there any comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Deetz first, and then Mrs. Ferraro.
Um, so based on the conversation we had yesterday and the concerns with kind of opening up the, the avenue for development there, I actually called that down to Lower Nazareth and spoke to their manager, Tim Tangus.
Tangus.
And, um, you know, he said he felt firm enough to even say his name, that he supported it, but, um, he feels no concern with it, and especially in regard to the apartment complex. Uh, it's his belief that actually they're going to shut down another ineffective pumping station elsewhere in there, so that'll be basically just to, as their gradual upgrade through systems. Um, so he felt very strong that it would not be some backdoor avenue for apartments or anything. So, uh, you know, my conversation with him, I feel, you know, confident supporting it.
Thank you. Mrs. Ferraro?
And the fears that I had too. I, um, called people who were involved in the lawsuit, and then I, and, and they in turn did some calling and some questioning of, of people who in the know. I also spoke to a township supervisor, um, and, uh, so all my concerns have been alleviated, and I plan to vote for this.
Okay, very good. Any other comment? Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, we addressed this last night at the, um, um, operations and projects, and we, we endorsed it. Essentially, it's going to, with a minor easement along Country Club Road, and a small, very small pump house, same style as the other structures there, going to allow us to hook up, um, to public water in the park. Currently, it's, um, well water that well, will have to be, um, redone sometime in the future if we, if we stay with it. We have monthly testing. Uh, we don't have fire hydrants there now. But what this will allow us to do, um, they'll bring it in, they'll create the pump house, they'll, uh, extend the line to cover all our property and move us more, and then it'll be up to us. They'll also put in the, um, hydrants, and then it'll be up to us to, uh, connect our, uh, our buildings there to, uh, to public water. And it's, they're doing this as an infrastructure, so it won't be a cost to us. The cost will be for us, of course, to do the plumbing and bring it in, but that's as per usual. But we didn't, we did endorse it.
Anything else, Mr. Bennell?
My only reservation is, I, I just don't, again, you have to beware of the, the free gifts that you get. You know, Ms. Ferraro brought up some, some good suggestions, and then, to be honest, I forgot a lot about that field and the proposed building there. I think it's good for the county, but I do get a little leery of why does Eastern Suburban want to take the costs of putting this in with really no benefit? I mean, how much water is the county going to be using? And again, I think it's good for the county, but I, I just, I, I do have to caution. I, I think that there's another possible issue for this pump house down the road, because the way I read the, um, the ordinance is that they can construct and reconstruct whenever they want. So if they decide they needed a bigger pump house in that ordinance, they have the right to reconstruct it. So, again, I think it's good for the county. I just have to caution future councils of be wary, because there's nothing that says that they can't tap into this and go crazy with it.
Mrs. Ferraro, and Mr. Deetz?
Uh, speaking to the supervisor, the area is zoned for an office park. So, um, without any problem, they could put in an office park, and, um, that would definitely need water. So, and it's, and it is. I heard the same story that, uh, Mr. Deetz heard too, that it is an upgrade.
Yeah, that's, that's just what I was going to say, is the benefit to them, I think, was getting rid of an older, and I don't know if it's inefficient or what, so it's part of a gradual system that they're upgrading different devices going through and whether that location, because I guess half of the, the lower Nazareth is, uh, provided by the, the water tower, and that is the other side, so whether it's more efficient or not. Um, but like I said, the, their managers, you know.
Any other comments on the, um, ordinance with the Eastern Suburban Water Authority? Okay, there being none. Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
And Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. That's all we had under old business. Is there any other old business, uh, to come before council this evening? Uh, there being none, then we will move into new business. Uh, first item is the introduction of an ordinance titled, "An Ordinance Amending the Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 13, Procurement and Disposition of County Property, Section 13.16, Contracts and Agreements, C-Dash-One." Mr. Phillips, uh, has, uh, asked to introduce this ordinance, but he would need a co-sponsor. Mr. Deetz has agreed to be a co-sponsor. Uh, then the, uh, public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be at the July 6th, 2017 meeting. Uh, next item under new business is consideration of a personnel request, Department of Fiscal Affairs, Assessment Division, Real Estate Assessor II. And I will call on Mr. Kraft to introduce the personnel resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Be it resolved by Northampton County Council that one, position of real estate assessor II, pay grade RU-23-01A, salary forty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars, shall be created in Department of Fiscal Affairs Assessment Division, effective June 15th, 2017. And I was not here for this meeting, so I don't know what you did, Peg. Does it move forward unanimously, or what?
My recollection is that we did move it forward with the recommendation for approval, but Mr. Phillips has some comment or question?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, uh, a motion that we table this.
We have a motion to table by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Ferraro. Again, a motion to table is not debatable. Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote on the table?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
No.
Passes by a vote of eight to two.
Okay, so the, um, resolution is tabled by a vote of seven to two. Next item under new business is consideration of a general purpose authority, uh, project, Morning Star Senior Life Resolution, and I'll call on Mrs. Ferraro to introduce that resolution.
Okay, um, just, this is the, for the health, safety, and welfare, as we have done many times before. I will just do the, "Now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council as follows. Section One, it is hereby declared desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Northampton County, Pennsylvania, to have the authority issue the bonds for the purpose of financing the project. And Section Two, the foregoing action of this council shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or tax, taxing power of the County of Northampton, Pennsylvania, nor shall the County of Northampton be liable for the payment of the principal of premium, if any, or interest on the bonds, or any other cost related thereto." This is the same as we have done for, it's, you know, for colleges, for, uh, and other hospitals.
Okay, and I believe the folks from Morning Star are here again. I think we covered this in depth yesterday. If you wanted to say a couple things, or if there's any questions, that weren't answered yesterday, Mr. Kraft?
For Morning Star, I guess, it's a thirty-four million dollar bond?
Up to.
Up to. And you're building what? Adding to an existing campus? Forty-eight what?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the best I can.
Could you tell us your name and position?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll introduce myself. Uh, my name's Christopher Hunt. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Morning Star Senior Living. I know, um, there's a lot, uh, our CEO, Susan Dravik, was here at the Finance Committee meeting last night. Um, our project is forty-eight units of independent living on a campus about a mile away from our existing campus in Nazareth, Pennsylvania. It's all independent living cottages, and will essentially be, um, part of our life plan community or our continuing care retirement community, just located on a different campus.
So this is like a Kirkland Village where the person buys the cottage, and they retain like a half ownership of it after they lived there for so long, and then you, you know, assume the rest?
It's similar, except our contracts, uh, under our contracts, our residents don't have any equity interest in the property. So they're paying an entrance fee, monthly fee. We continue to own the property, and that entrance fee and monthly fee gives them the right to access our personal care and our skilled nursing services when they, when they need to.
All right, you know, it seems like an awfully big project and an awfully big bond. Is it, uh, does it enact prevailing wage for the area? Are wages and standards or anything? Are you going to be using local contractors? Are you going to be bringing people in from, uh, you know, the flat hats from lands, or, you know, out there on the other side of the state?
No, we're using, we're using two local contractors, one to do the site work, um, and one to do, uh, the residential construction.
All right.
Um, so, so we're using local labor.
But is it prevailing wage since it's thirty-four million dollars?
I'm, I'm sorry, what do you mean by prevailing wage?
Uh, the prevailing wage of the area, what people get paid. I mean, you know, you can hire people for eight dollars an hour from, you know, work release, or you can hire real people who have sustaining living wages for their job.
Uh, no, we're, we're using contractors that will pay sustaining wages for the job.
Okay, I'll hold you to it. All right. The only question I have, just thirty-four million dollars for forty-eight units, you know, up to thirty-four million, seems like an awful lot of money for, you know, forty-eight houses. So, I mean, I understand roads and infrastructure and what they cost, but it seems like an awful lot of money.
They might need a pumping station.
Well, maybe they do, but pumping stations are good. We won't even get into that.
Well, the, the infrastructure has to be laid down. That's a significant cost. Uh, Mr. Phillips?
That, that's in Upper Nazareth, correct?
Yes, that's in Upper Nazareth Township.
By eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, um, thank you. Any further questions? Uh, thank you, uh, there being none. Uh, any further comments from council? Then Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
And Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to one.
Passes by a vote of eight to one. Thank you very much. Uh, next item under, uh, new business is, uh, consideration of a Srin Memorandum of Understanding Release Resolution, and I'll just read the end of it, because, uh, unless Mr. Geisinger has a copy of it in front of him. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council agrees, uh, as it did not know if this property would be sold, to receive fifty thousand dollars, and have the county executive execute a standard memorandum of understanding release." Uh, and this relates to the, uh, Srin, uh, memorandum from 2011, um, regarding, uh, payments for farmland preservation under the tax increment financing that, uh, had been implemented. Uh, again, we discussed this at length at the Finance Committee meeting yesterday. Is there any, uh, comments or concerns about this? Mr. Phillips?
It was just recommended, Glenn's not on the phone, but we did recommend that this, uh, we move forward. And we used your numbers, John.
Okay.
We'll see, we'll see how that works.
We'll see. Um, anything else on this? Okay, um, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
No.
Passes by a vote of eight to one.
Passes by a vote of eight to one. Uh, next item under new business is consideration of open space projects. Uh, and I will go through these individually. The first item is, uh, Northampton County Cata Sockwa Creek Riparian Buffer Restoration Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Uh, sure. We went over it today during open space, but, uh, looking for, uh, the county request of seven thousand dollars, and now, now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council hereby approves the Cata Sockwa Creek Riparian Buffer Restoration Project. Further, Northampton County Council Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his designee is directed, take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project.
Again, this was, uh, discussed earlier this evening, and the recommendation was for approval. Is there any further discussion from council? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. Phillips? Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Uh, next item is the Wildlands Conservery, O'Houghton Creek Watershed Restoration Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Sure, and that's for the county grant request of seventy-five thousand, which is twenty-five percent of the project. Now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council hereby approves the Ogotten Creek Watershed Restoration Project. Further, Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his designee is directed, and take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project.
Uh, again, this was discussed earlier this evening, and a recommendation was made to approve. Is there any further discussion from council? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
And Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero. Uh, next item is the, um, Lower Mount Bethel Township Tekining Trail Fee-Simple Acquisition Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Sure, and the county grant request is for two hundred thousand. Now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council hereby approves the Tekining Trail Fee-Simple Acquisition Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his designee is directed, and take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project.
Uh, again, this was recommended at the Open Space Committee. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Um, next item is, uh, Open Space Project, the Nature Conservancy, Deputy Walton Conservation Easement Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Sure, the county grant request for ninety thousand three hundred dollars, which is forty-seven, forty-seven percent of the project, uh, now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council hereby approves the Deputy Walton Conservation Easement Project. Further, Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Council or County Livable Landscapes Program, or his designee is directed, and take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project.
Okay, uh, again, this was discussed earlier this evening. Uh, is there any further discussion on this? Uh, yeah, I'll just say, I mean, I thought the, um, the appraisal was, um, was a bit generous, um, so I'm having a hard time supporting it. That's just my opinion. Uh, any other discussion? Mr. Phillips?
I, I had a problem with it too. Um, sort of what swayed me is, we had a similar one that we voted for. I voted against, but we voted for, and, um, the supervisor's upper, upper Mount Bethel didn't even support it. This is, to my mind, kind of similar, but those people who are local and close are, are supporting it. And they're, they're putting their money up. If you recall, the other one I'm talking about, they didn't put their money up. They, they withdrew their money. So, um, I think, I think it's high, um, and I'm, I'm, have some angst about it, but I'm going to support it.
Okay.
I'd say, I, I do agree that, I, I think it is high. Um, they did bring up the, the, the paper showing, you know, I guess we had questions about it being developable, and it looked like there were a lot of homes or, or lots nearby, so there was some demand for it, so. And I think, like, the point you pointed up of, uh, the local municipality, you know, putting up, you know, their, their share of it, and, and obviously knowing the area, so.
Okay, uh, anything further? Um, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
Uh, no.
Passes by a vote of seven to two.
Passes by a vote of seven to two. Next item, uh, consideration of open space projects, City of Bethlehem, Expansion and Upgrade of Monocacy Park Trail System Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Sure, the county grant request is for two hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and seventeen cents, which is, uh, fifty percent of the project. Now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. The Northampton County Council hereby approves the expansion and upgrade of Monocacy Park Trail System Project. Further, Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his designee is directed, and take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project.
Uh, again, this was discussed earlier at the Open Space Committee and recommended for approval. Is there any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I can just say, it's, I mean, I've been going down Monocacy down here for years, and the last time, uh, we did anything to the, to the banks and everything was when Charlie Brown was around. And we did it, you know, it was a huge project, and it's getting really bad. So it's, it's desperately needed down there.
I, I would say, I, I would kind of, I was actually going to say something similar, but that, this area right here is, is, um, heavily trafficked, and it's a popular destination for a lot of families. They even have a dog park and everything, so. It's a, it's, it's, it's a common place that a lot of people in Bethlehem utilize, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think the, the key part to making this come together though is a DCNR grant. Um, so we're, we're hopeful that they get that. Otherwise, uh, the city is, might have to put out money, so. Key element for that. Any further discussion? Um, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero. Uh, next item under new business then is consideration of an Article 13 Contract Approval Resolution, Recovery Revolution Incorporated, and, uh, I'll read that one into the record here. It was, uh, let's see. There we go. Uh, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Recovery Revolution, Inc., uh, to administer and direct services of the non-narcotic medication assisted pilot program. And the term of the contract is for one year, and the amount is ninety-six thousand dollars. And it was recommended, uh, by the Finance Committee and Director Keen, uh, yesterday." Any further discussion on, uh, this contract? Mr. Warner?
I, I, during our discussions yesterday, it was, we all had a, we all, I think we're in agreement that it's, it's a needed program, but, uh, it was pointed out that we would like to hear from Recovery. Since they've been with us since 2005, and we talked about recidivism in our past experiences with those types of programs, we, we had asked that we have a presentation be in front of us from Recovery Systems, so, Recovery Revolution. So I think, as long as we are aware and we hold them to the, the suggestion, I think we'll be okay. I am for this.
Yeah, I am too. I think, uh, a good idea might be to have a committee meeting. Mr. Bennell, I think you might be interested?
Yeah, we discussed, I'll try to set it up for the, the off week in July.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, this is a, um, a grant, state grant that's funding this, and we're all wary of state grants, and, uh, you know, I've said it to, to the director, and I'll say it here, is that, you know, my assumption, this is not automatic pilot. You know, if this state grant goes away next year, don't assume it's going to move forward. And we also, we didn't discuss it, but we had a big discussion in regards to, you know, criteria of success. And if this goes through next year, um, we're going to expect to have a, uh, a good understanding of how we are judging this from success, and I know that really is why Bob wants to have them in before next year, to start talking to them about the program, so that they understand our concern, and, you know, I didn't feel good about, uh, let me just say, yeah, I'm, I'm a skeptic. I know we have to do something, and I'm, I'm going to back this, but I am very, uh, very wary that, uh, it's provable.
Any other comments from, uh, members of council? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Benel?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. That's all we had under new business. Is there any other new business to come before council this evening? There being none, we will move into council committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Mr. Dietz?
Of course, we had our open space committee meeting today. I went over the trail updates and various projects. And then earlier today, Brian Coop and Gordy and Jim Wilson took us out to Leisure Lake for a tour and look at, you know, obviously, I think everyone's aware of the draining of Mincy Lake, and they had that project done out there and look at what we can do both on the lake, but then also local nearby businesses and stuff that could create economic, you know, businesses in the area, the positive impact. And Brian did talk about getting together and offering to take council up to see Mincy Lake and other county parks and that, so he'll get something together. We'll try and spread that out as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on that? Then, any other committee reports? Mrs. Ferraro?
Conservation District is still looking for their professional engineer, but also don't, in August, geez, what's the matter with me? In August, they will be doing a tour, and as they always do before their meeting that evening. And I think it should be interesting. They're going out to the FedEx site.
Oh, that's neat.
So plan on joining us at one o'clock in August? You'll hear more about it before then.
I can't even get on the FedEx, so that's because you go near a traffic.
You're not checking erosion incentive control, but maybe.
I believe that was a liaison. Any other liaison reports?
I want to say something about the Human Services Committee meeting, although I think, are you going to speak on it?
Well, we'll go back to committee reports. Mr. Vaughn, you have a committee report.
I think it's important that we, Kevin laid out quite a program, and I think it's important we acknowledge his.
Yeah, absolutely. I was, we had a Human Services Committee meeting, actually ran almost all the way up into this meeting. I think it did, actually. We talked a lot about Gracemont again. We usually meet with them every month, and we talked about quality measures. We're making progress in that regard. Slowly but surely, we'll get back to where we were. We also had an excellent presentation from Children and Youth Director Kevin Dolan in that he kind of laid out an ongoing, it's kind of between a rock and a hard place. We want the extra laws to protect the children, but they're not necessarily funding all the extra laws. And so we're kind of stuck with how do we fund and execute all these extra laws that have passed down. And he kind of went through, I don't know, fifteen, close to, different laws. I mean, these are all good intentions with these laws, but we need to, I think our Human Services, or rather, our Children and Youth Division has probably come to the point where we might need to talk about expanding the number of people in that department. And, you know, again, I'd like to highlight that, you know, they have one of the toughest jobs in the county, and, you know, we, as the committee, respect their work gratefully and can't say enough about the situations that they're put in and how they overcome them and try to do the right thing for the children, so.
Yeah, I think two key things came up there. One was our ability to hire and keep staff on board, and the secondary question is, do we need to increase the size of the staff as part of next year's budget request? So that's something for our director to consider as she puts together her budget for next year. Mr. Phillips?
I keep referring to this because it was such an eye-opener. Again, I went to the CCAP meeting, and I keep saying it's not like a broken record, but, you know, Supreme Court Justice Max Baer, who, Mr. Dolan and Judge Beretta, they talk a lot in regards to solving problems at the state level, and it is almost, yeah, left that meeting almost unsolvable. The burden, the drama, I mean, you only have a certain small percentage of people who could put up with what they put up with. It's unbelievable. And the other thing is, not that I'm a budget hawk, but throwing money at them often is not the issue. They're not money-driven. You know, they're driven where they want to do something and they want to make a difference in people. One of the people that, you know, they go out, I mean, it's weird, but, you know, you go out on a call and you're asked to put on a bulletproof vest. You know, that's pretty serious stuff. You don't know what you're getting into. So I have a lot of compassion for what they go through.
I would, I kind of started this down. I apologize if I stepped on your.
No, please.
But when he said that, he said he was overwhelmed, it's not, I think what he was saying to us was, it's way more than the money. It's way more than his staff. And I think it's important that we step up to the plate, hopefully. We're going to, maybe we should address this with our state legislators and go further. But the fact is, he's reaching out, and they lost thirty-seven administrators in twenty-six months. That's ridiculous, okay? And that's across the state. And so the whole thing is, it reeks of revamping. It needs something changed. And I think it's important that we know it and that we do something about it. It has always been an issue, but I just noted from two thousand and fourteen, they had three thousand five hundred referrals. As of two thousand and seventeen, they're going to well over have doubled that. And we're still in the same spot we were. That's just a formula for disaster. So I just wanted to bring that out, and I thank you for allowing me to add that to you, Seth.
Anything else under committee, Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, we had our projects and operations meeting, and spent most of the time understanding, going through that easement for the water. That was a big part of it. And we went through the bridges and went through, you know, open projects, so it was a good meeting.
Turtle Bridge.
And a turtle bridge.
Anything else under committee? Okay, liaison. Okay, I'll just mention the retirement board met last week with our new financial advisors. And one other action we took was we agreed to study whether or not to increase the cap for lifetime medical expenditures for retirees. Any other liaison, Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, under liaison, I went to, it was a joint Lehigh Valley business, the Tony Iannelli Group.
If it's business, it matters?
Yeah, yeah. And the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, and the focus was, it was at the Steel Stacks. It was a really big event, and it was transportation. And they brought in, you know, an expert on that field, and he spoke. And at the end of it, people from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission were able to have a roundtable with him. So it was really productive. This is not as almost unsolvable as the problem that the children and youth people have, but when you look at things, it's like, wow, how do you solve this? It is very, very complicated.
I just want to, I mentioned it two weeks ago, but I want to reiterate it, that it's a really big deal for the LVEDC, that Lehigh Valley is going to be featured in this American Airlines in-flight magazine, and they're going to be having the unveiling of the cover and the story and everything next week. So if you're interested, it's going to be a big deal for our area, and it should hopefully attract many more, or at least give us exposure to people internationally and continentally who are interested in setting up shop here in Lehigh Valley. So it should be extremely helpful for our economic outlook for the future.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, there being none. Council Clerk report?
Nothing.
Nothing this evening? Solicitor's report, Mr. Lauer?
You had asked me to look into the situation in one of the county buildings with respect to ADA noncompliance. We have begun that process, and as I was explaining earlier tonight to Mr. Warner, it's an interesting question, because the ADA has changed over the years. The concept of what's grandfathered and what isn't has changed. Grandfathered structures become un-grandfathered under later iterations of the Act. So we're putting all of that together, and I hope to have something to you by the next meeting. The other thing, I think, that maybe another aspect of it that needs to be addressed would be to consult with insurance carriers to the extent that they're involved in this. And I will be consulting with Mr. Durkin about that, and I'll report back to you. We're in the middle of it, but I honestly found it to be a little more complex than I thought it was going to be, so.
Mr. Phillips, you have a question?
I know administration is redoing the RFP, because when we table it, I would just ask the administration to hold off on sending out that RFP until we hear from you and from Mr. Durkin, because that would make sense for them to move forward with it, and then we'd have to modify it.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
I'd like to add a note here, if I may. During our discussion with Brian Coop, he brought up the fact that there's a Lehigh Valley Independent Living Group that works, A, noncompliance, and they do, they'll do a walk-in for free to give us an evaluation. So I don't know if anyone's contacted them or not. May help find out where we at.
Bob, what's the name of it?
Called the Lehigh Valley Independent Living Group for ADA compliance.
Anything else for the solicitor, Mr. Phillips?
Didn't we ask you to look at the, or get with Mr. Ryan in regards to the RFP that, the lack of the RFP that went out for the engineering study?
Yeah, and my understanding is that they have actually drafted a new document. I haven't seen it yet, but as soon as I do, I will report back to you. I mean, you have my opinion from last time. I don't know what the new document will look like, whether it will request RFPs. I don't know. But when we get it, I will report back.
Okay.
And I'm assuming, based on the fact that it's being rewritten, that there has been no action taken with respect to the previous document.
Right. I'll just say this, is that we had, when this conversation, we had it last time, there's a lot of people, and I agree, that we do not want to have the legislation through the executive. I mean, that's not a desired point. But if the administration is not following administrative code, it's not mismanagement on our part to execute a court proceedings. That would be part of our role. That's what we would have to do. So I didn't want to get with that discussion last time, and I do not want to do it. It's not what I, but I mean, I will do it if I think it's not according to the administrative code. I wouldn't say I would do it. I would suggest we do it. I would be for it.
Well, my understanding from Mr. Durkin is that the document is being rewritten and will be provided to us for whatever input we want to take with that. So they are not, at this point in time, proceeding pursuant to the previous document. Rather, they're rewriting this one, I believe.
We're modifying, we're modifying the current document in this discussion we had last time.
Okay.
So that we would have something that's compliant, that's a compliance issue.
Is the vendor executing under that, are we committed to that vendor, under that current document that is fine? Are they executing under it?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I know that right now, I'm not aware of any work that's being done. But I have, that's not my purview. My purview is to work with the compliance issue, work through the compliance issue with Mr. Lauer. So we're doing that, and I believe that we'll have something that we can work through and button that up in the near term.
It's not the way we want to take the action.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anything else for the solicitor this evening? Mr. Dietz?
Mr. Lauer, I asked you about checking into whether or not we needed to adopt the central booking and what the court's take on that was.
Well, yeah, and I think what I indicated the last time we spoke is that my, my research indicates that this is something undertaken by the judicial branch, by the court. And the question that was raised, as I understood it by Mr. Kuzic, was whether council in some way ought to have some input in it, some control over it. And Matt, if I misunderstood, I apologize, but my understanding was that we were going to be, if you will, monitoring what's happening with the fees that are being received. How much will they be for a year? Will it reach the ten thousand dollar number that we talked about? And my understanding was that that was going to be monitored first, and then we would decide whether, under those circumstances, we need to be doing anything. But if I'm incorrect, then let me know, and I'll certainly.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay. Anything else for the solicitor this evening? Okay, before we adjourn, I just wanted to make a comment. The next time we meet, hopefully, we will have a state budget that fully funds county functions. I think, you know, we all ought to reach out to our legislators if we see them in passing, please. The preliminary budget that was passed last month was not kind to county functions. So it's my hope that in the next couple of weeks, that we do get a budget that funds critical functions that we have here in the county, and human services being a very important, most important one, I think. Courts as well took a hit in that preliminary budget. So it's my hope that the next time we meet, that we do have a state budget that meets